Hi, I'm Jackson Duncan. I'm a fifth grader at Lake Filometry School. Today there's 3,000 fifth graders at the Salt Dogs game.
Everybody else could probably just line up and wait for them to get their stuff. And they'll line up this right in front of the gates there and ready to go on the park. Alright, have a good time, guys.
We get to go meet the players. And then we get to go stand in the positions.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Let's go!
Our next junior PA announcer is Corinne Bautin.
My batting for the Salt Dogs number four center fielder, Robbie Coosdale.
Thanks, you guys.
You guys are awesome.
Fantastic.
Professional.
Awesome.
We should be very grateful that we were able to go to a Salt Dogs game. Because most kids don't get to do that.
The game was awesome! Amazing ball!
I call to order this meeting of the Board of Education for September 13th, 2016. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Present.
Mrs. Danick?
Here.
Ms. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Present.
Ms. Mungard?
Here.
Mr. Schulte?
Mr. Schulte is excused. I would note that the Open Meeting Act is posted at the back of the room. And also FYI, I'm being told that we're having some technical difficulties and so our live stream on the website is not working right now. We are live on TV and we're recording and it'll be, the recording will be on the website later, just so that you know. We will be beginning this meeting with a public hearing on the 2016-17 Lincoln Public Schools' property tax request. The Board of Education of Lancaster County School District One, also known as Lincoln Public Schools, is conducting this hearing pursuant to Sections 77-1601.02 and other Nebraska laws. These laws provide that the 2016-2017 property tax request for the school district shall be the property tax request from the prior year unless the school district holds a hearing and modifies the property tax request. The prior year's property tax request would not correctly fund the 2016-2017 budget, which has already been formally adopted by the Board of Education. The testimony received in this hearing will be taken into consideration by the Board when we take action to approve or modify the preliminary property tax request prior to October 14th, 2016. I hereby open this public hearing for Lancaster County School District 001. Please limit your testimony to no more than five minutes per individual or group. Would the first person wishing to testify, please come forward now? Seeing none, I hereby close this public hearing. Next is the approval of the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, those will stand as approved. Next, under Special Reports, Presentations, and Celebrations of Success, I would like to recognize Connie.
Yes, Board of Education, I would like to call forward Alex Torres, please. Board of Education, it's my pleasure to introduce Alex. Alex is the 2016 Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year. And he is here today to give us his speech that he gave to the United Way Kickoff Event last Thursday in front of 500 people. He did an amazing job and we would like him to give it to us today. So Alex, we will let you go ahead.
Alex, I'm told that there's a microphone on that podium. Are you seeing that there? Maybe John can help.
You won't have to worry about it all. This piece right here will pick up your voice, so you can just speak to the Board as if you were talking to them in the room. Okay. Alright. Scene one. Boom, crash! All of a sudden, I found myself still attached to my bike, sideways and immobilized, feeling the coldness of the street concrete. I thought to myself, was this real? Am I here? I was only trying to ride my bike to school, less than seven blocks away. I was sure I could make it, like I ran every other day. My head was bleeding. Everyone's gathered around me. And the driver of the SUV ran in front of me and said, "I just hit a child. I just hit a child." As I hear the sirens in the background, today's my last day of school in May, my seventh grade year. The impact never knocked me out as I was awake under the SUV that had dragged me and my bike. Crying my eyes out, I didn't want to die with all this blood and trauma, but mine was thinking it was a great possibility. So, I prayed to Jesus to allow me to live. Good afternoon, my name is Alex Torres, a senior in Lincoln High School in Lincoln, Nebraska. An extremely proud and alive member of the Boys and Girls Club of Lincoln in Lancaster County. Born in Phoenix, Arizona, lived in Arizona, Idaho, the roots of Lincoln. I have three sisters, one brother, and a mom and dad. Being a shy kid coming to New York State, I didn't know anything. Didn't hardly speak English because at home, we only talked Spanish. My family was poor and my dad was only on working and my mom just took care of us. Enough about that. As for me personally, I was a confusing kid, not knowing from right from wrong. The friends I made were not a good influence on me. I just wouldn't fit in the crowd. Conflicted, I found more relaxed with the Boys and Girls Club. As the year went on, my parents forced me to go to Boys and Girls Club's Power Hour because in school, I didn't care about completing any of my homework. I wanted to leave the club, but I was not allowed. Then, I was introduced to Mr. Cordera, but the club members called him Mr. C. I felt like he was always on my case 24/7. I was like, dude, leave me alone, you're getting my last nerve. Scene two. At the scene of the accident, I could not move. The ambulance came and lifted the car for me. They put me inside the stretcher. And inside the ambulance, I was in unbearable pain, screaming to top him alongside my mother. Arriving at the hospital, Ashley pushed me straight into the emergency room. As I opened my eyes again, I saw my beautiful mother. I told my mother I was sorry and it was all my fault. She told me, no, it's not. And she also started to cry with me. The nurse shared with me the skin inside of my head was split open like a banana peel. I had 34 staples inside of my head and a fractured wrist. Three weeks later, I had a strong desire returning to the Boys and Girls Club and went every day for the rest of summer. It was my eighth grade year. I thought I was going to change, but I didn't. I started lying to my mother a lot. And my doctor decided to send me to Madonna Rehabilitation Hospital to make sure of any brain damage or memory loss a result of the accident. Going to therapy helped me realize I was fine. Ninth grade, still immature, but it's not I focused on school, just barely passing my grades. Tenth grade, I decided not to hang around with former friends. Oddly enough, I began picturing myself working at the Boys and Girls Club when I graduated from high school. Total transformation. Dr. Brent, our unit director, talked to me about being a junior staff member. I was really interested, so I became a leader with the Youngers all summer long. I felt like I could be a great staff member. That was my motivator to improve my grades. I had all A's and B's in all my classes. I'm the first in my family to do that. Scene three. It was my eleventh grade year that I was going to show confirmation. That I was a leader to the club, staff, members, and mostly myself. Then, Mr. C approached me about Keystone. Keystone is basically a club where we build leadership and responsibility. And I said, yeah, why not? I became president of Keystone. Our program has been phenomenal. We started T-9 once a month and expanding to a brand-new Boys and Girls Club building next year. Every day, I am reminded of the positive choice to replace my past. The permanent scar inside my head means to me the second chance to the lights of survival was the Boys and Girls Club. I have dedicated the last seven and a half years of my life staying connected with our club. I'm happy to say it's paid off. The blood I shed riding my bike to school, representing a negative situation, has not become the same blood that runs in my veins representing my positive transition attitude and thought bisecting the Boys and Girls Club as my new way to live. Though, I have an undeniably commitment serving the Boys and Girls Club community locally, statewide, regionally, and nationally. The many a lessons I learned will never be forgotten. Thank you, Boys and Girls Club, for a new life.
Alex, that is wonderful. Thank you so much for sharing that. Now, is there anyone in the audience that you would like to introduce to us?
I'd like to introduce Mr. Cordera and me and the Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you.
Wow, Alex, what a powerful story. Thank you so much for sharing it with us tonight. Alright, next on the agenda, we are set to hear a report from the Foundation of Lincoln Public Schools. Wendy?
What an incredible young man. It kind of is inspiring for me because we work to support young men like Alex and others throughout the district every day. And so, great, it was great to see him gone, but he was remarkable. I just, let me pass this out over here. I wanted to give you a little bit of a year-end snapshot of how the foundation, what the foundation was able to accomplish last year. We raised over $1.5 million for student projects this last year. We're very, very proud of that. That's one of our high records for student activities and experiences and we're very, very excited about that. We granted out over $1 million to various projects as well. Some of the dollars that we raised were invested for the future and others were spent out right away. And so, again, $1 million came back to the district through the foundation for Lincoln Public Schools last year. We had, saw some really great things happen. We instigated an ambassador's program and we have an ambassador in 90% of all of the LPS buildings, helping to talk about the resources that are available at the foundation for various schools. We, I just came from an ambassador meeting tonight and those are a bunch of fired-up instructors and paras and special ed folks from all over. It's really exciting to see them all come together and have such passion for doing great things for their schools. So, we're doing what we can to help them. We, we are in the process of implementing a program called Propeller, which is kind of like a script card, but it's a way for PTOs and parents and clubs to be able to raise money for their schools without really thinking about it. And it's a zero-fee-based opportunity for them, that they can go and shop and have money come back to their Fund for Excellence without ever having to throw a fun night or have to do anything like that. And so, we really have high hopes for seeing that be implemented this year. We also saw a huge, huge increase in our Fund in Need program this year. We funded 175 individual proposals last year. That compares to 132 the year prior. We raised over $100,000 for various schools through our Fund in Need program. That compares to $67,000 the year prior. We had 100% participation in our Inspire Awards, which happened in the spring. And we hope to have that same participation rate when we do the event again this April. And we saw a 200% increase in staff giving through the foundation. And a lot of that went straight to the schools themselves. The staff was able to contribute to their Fund for Excellence at the schools. Really, really great and exciting things. Our most active schools are Elliott, Clinton, McPhee, Prescott, Sheridan, Irving, Lincoln High, Lincoln Northeast, and Lincoln Southeast. So, you can see that the schools that, a lot of the schools that need a lot of the help are really getting it from the foundation and using the foundation's resources to make that happen. I also have a little snippet in here that just is near and dear to my heart. We have 67 donors who have given 10 years or more to the foundation and 17 have given 20 years or more to the foundation. Our community believes in its public schools and believes in consistently supporting them. So, the foundation is just really proud to be a partner with Lincoln Public Schools so that we can, you often talk, and the school district does a great job of all means all. And at the foundation, we talk about all can also mean each. We try to help the schools so that they can make sure that all can mean each. So, every student has the opportunity to take full advantage of their public school education with the extra activities that are afforded to them because of that education. So, proud to serve, proud to be a partner with you, and just grateful for the opportunity to serve kids. Any questions?
Questions for Wendy? Wendy, thanks for joining us. I would agree with you. I think that historically, the community has been very supportive of the public schools. It is really neat to see yet another indicator of that in the support that the foundation has been getting from the community. And it's so wonderful for us too to have such a great partnership and people who are working so hard for our kids. So, thank you for your work.
You bet. Thank you.
Alright, next is public comment. I have one blue card from Jolene, I'm sorry, is it Schulte? Come on up, Jolene. And the way this will work is that when you start talking, you'll have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jolene Schulte and I'm the president of the Para Association. First of all, thank you for trying to help us with recruiting and retention. We definitely need to do something that can change the statistics of 60% of our pares staying for less than two years. A 16 cent increase, I don't think is going to make anyone take a second look at our jobs. College tuition reimbursement is a great way to get people to consider the job. After a few years though, where does it get us back? Pares, we are back to square one, looking for more pares because those have moved on to teaching positions for more money. Degree stipend is a great way as well, but when you make someone around an extra 20 cents an hour as a para because you have a doctorate degree is certainly not too enticing for them. What about us who have been there five, 10, 15, 20, 20, 25, 30, 35, and yes, even 40 years? We have gained a tremendous amount of knowledge by doing our jobs day in and day out. Those of us who are older are not going to take advantage of the tuition reimbursement now, but we would certainly like to be compensated for our years of dedicated service to our children and to our schools. If any of you would walk a day in our shoes, I think you would be completely surprised as what we do and what is expected of us to do. Our jobs have changed drastically over the last 10 years, unlike our pay. I think, we just feel that this proposal may be more of a Band-Aid instead of a long-term solution. Thanks, that's what I have to say.
Thank you. That is the only card that I received. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Lanny?
I'd like to pull item on the consent agenda, item number 12 under Contracts, the Agreements with Leadership Resources for Designing a Strategic Plan, Contract Number 8744.
Okay. And then, is there a motion? Lanny?
And I'd be happy to move approval of the consent agenda with that removal.
And then, I saw Kathy next.
I would second that.
Discussion on the balance of the consent agenda. Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Ms. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. And that brings us to items for first reading tonight. Item 10 dot 1 dot 1, the 2016-17 Lincoln Public Schools' Property Tax Request. Now, as you may remember from our process last year and in previous years, we have gone through our budget process. We have approved a budget. And this is the part now where we ask for the tax revenue to support that budget. So, this is part of our annual process. Dr. Standish, is there anything that you would like to add to that?
I think that outlines it well. We just stand ready to answer any questions the board members may have. This adheres to the budget that was adopted by the board.
So, one of the things that we often talk about is our property tax levy rate. And I remember it being a little counterintuitive for me that we don't actually talk about necessarily that rate. We do it the other direction. We talk about the total taxes that we're going to need to support the budget and then from that, we derive the rate. Is that correct, Dr. Standish?
Correct.
Okay. So, are there any questions about this item tonight? Seeing none then, that'll be back for action at our next meeting. Next, from the superintendent, we have the Electronic Theater Controls Grant to Upgrade Theater Equipment at Southwest High School. Dr. Stavum?
This is just a request running through the board since it involves some equipment and an enhancement to the actual facility. So, this is the request for the grant application by Southwest High School.
Questions or comments? Kathy?
So, how does this equipment compare with the equipment that's installed in all of the other high schools?
I wouldn't be able to answer those specifics, but we can certainly get information on that between now and second reading. That would be great. Thank you.
Other questions? Alright, we'll look for that information from Dr. Stavum and then this item will be back to us for action at our next meeting. Next, items for action tonight. 11 dot 1 dot 1, computer laptops for certificated staff. Lanny?
We have approval of item 11 dot 1 dot 1, computer laptops for certificated staff.
Connie?
Can I second that?
Lanny?
Okay. And this item comes from the Technology Committee, where I served with Annie and Matt. It's a purchase of 3,500 MacBook Air computers for teachers with a total cost of $2.94 million. Existing teacher laptops will be repurposed for use in computer labs and this was discussed at our last meeting. With that, I'd open it up to any questions or comments.
Questions for Lanny or staff? Alright, seeing none. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Ms. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next, item 11 dot 2 dot 1, Permission for Proposed Additional Compensation for Health Technicians. Is there a motion? Kathy?
I would move approval.
Second? Annie?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Ms. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next is item 11 dot 2 dot 2, Permission for the Proposed Memo of Understanding with the Lincoln Para Educator Association. And so, before we talk about this item, in deference to the speaker that we had, I'd like to address some of the questions and just remind our board colleagues of the process that we went through on this. You'll remember that earlier in the year, through the negotiation process, we had agreed with the para educators on a 2.88% increase, which was consistent with what we had negotiated across the other employment groups. And then, after that, we'd had some process. We, it has gone through three committees to try to provide a little bit of an increase this year in addition to what had already been negotiated. We have approved the budget that includes that extra amount. So, at this point, I think that we have an issue to vote for and I think that the only thing we can really be looking at tonight is whether we want to still provide that extra 16 cents or not. One thing I would note, some of the conversations that we had as a board were noting, I think that there was a fair amount of support for the idea that yes, we do need to be looking at the work that the para educators are doing so that we can better understand that. And I do think, I hope I'm not out of line in saying this, that there is a fair amount of board support for getting the compensation to the point where it's commensurate for the, for the duties performed. One of the things that we're, that we're going through right now is we have just been through the DMC audit of our special ed services. And I know that we're going to be spending most of this next year taking a comprehensive look at how we provide special ed services, including looking at a lot of different positions, including the para educators. And so, I think it's difficult for us, one of the conversations that we had was that it's difficult to make significant changes this year until we get the results of that review. With all that being said, that is the background. My inclination is that we still have an action item tonight that we need to take action on. So, with that, I'll ask for a motion. Barb?
I so move approval of this.
Is there a second? Connie?
I second that.
Discussion? Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next, there were no expedited or emergency actions. Items removed from the consent agenda, we have item 12 for Contract Number 8744. Lanny?
I move approval of item number 12 under Contracts, item number 8744, the Agreement with Leadership Resources for Designing a Strategic Plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Annie. Lanny?
Alright, this item comes from, with the unanimous recommendation of the Strategic Planning Committee, which is Annie, Connie, and myself. I'd like to begin by thanking my board colleagues for their input for the community engagement piece of the strategic planning process. As you know, one of our superintendent and board goals for this year is to engage our community, to determine the priorities that will be used in our next five-year strategic plan. As the next step in that process, we recommend working with Leadership Resources, a local company with expertise in strategic planning. In the audits tonight is Dan with Leadership Resources, and I thank him for attending. The community engagement process will be based on three priorities that emerged from our discussions: inclusion, future focus, and unity. We want a very inclusive community engagement process. We want to cast a wide net that will capture the ideas, needs, and educational priorities of our community. A whole bunch of people will want to be a part of this process and they should be. We've discussed holding both open-house style community forums and specific conversations with invited groups and individuals. We want the community discussion to be about where we are going, not just where we are and where we have been. What will the delivery of education in Lincoln look like in the next five to 10 years? We also want this process to bring the board and the community together around goals that represent what is best for students. The committee recommends that board members play a listening role in the community engagement process, allowing the focus to be on community voices. We encourage board members to attend the community forums, but we'll use trained facilitators to conduct the meetings. One of the materials attached to our board agenda tonight is Proposal for Strategic Solutions, which describes how Leadership Resources will help guide the process, establish questions and format, train facilitators, etc. The goal is to present the results of the community engagement to the board in April. And with that, I would open it up to questions and comments.
That's a great presentation. Thank you, Lanny. Are there any questions? Annie?
I don't have a question because we've had quite a few meetings already on a decision that we just decided to keep moving forward on. I think it'd be really just important to say that we gave some great thought to this process and how we're going to move forward. And this is just the very first step towards a really large opportunity for all of us and it's pretty exciting.
Thank you. Alright, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Ms. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Are there any reports from board committees? Lanny?
Yes, from the Technology Committee. We had a presentation this week about the Mosaic presentation, which you may have seen the displays out in the district office on the first floor. And the reason that went to technology is that this year, it's interactive. So, you can see virtual reality goggles, you can scan QR codes on the books, and you can even listen to music. So, Mosaic was also featured in an article in Teacher Librarian Magazine in April and has been going on for 25 years. So, it's going to be on display through Friday and then we'll go out in the schools. So, it's a pretty exciting change of pace for technology to see how we have impacted Mosaic.
Neat, thank you. Reports from other committees? Lanny, is there a report from the Career Academy?
Nothing from the Career Academy tonight.
And there is nothing from the superintendent tonight. Announcements of upcoming events for the board. On September 14th, tomorrow morning, bright and early, we've got the State of the City Address at 7:15 a.m. at Holiday Inn. On Sunday, September 18th, we'll have the Y-Song On Sunday, September 18th, we'll have the Wyngong Elementary Dedication at Tuohak at Wyngong. Later that evening is the Foundation for Lincoln Public Schools Benefit Concert, welcoming Hannah Houston Home at 7:00 p.m. at the Lead. On September 20th is the Chamber Celebrate Business Awards Luncheon at 11:30 at the Cornhusker Hotel. September 22nd is the Districtwide PTO Meeting at 7:00 p.m. here in the Boardroom, and that takes us to our next Board meeting on September 27th. That brings us again to the point in the agenda where we would ask for public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to address the Board? Seeing none, Annie?
Can I address the Board?
Please.
Right when I walked in, a friend called me and said, "There's an excellent series of documentaries about public education airing on public television this week, including one tomorrow, which is about the future of schools." Considering what we're going to be doing, I just wanted to put it out there that I think would be a great resource to watch tonight. Like I said, it was running in. Can't remember what it was, it sounded very interesting. So they know, anyway, public television starting at 9 o'clock to 9 o'clock, and tomorrow definitely it's about the future of schools in America. So I think it'd be a great resource for us to kind of put out there, because that's what we're talking about, so.
Neat, thank you, Annie. Next, there is no request for a closed session. That brings us to the end of the regular meeting where we will recess and go into the ESU 18 meeting.
I hereby call this meeting of the Board of Educational Service Unit 18 to order. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Present.
Mrs. Danick?
Here.
Mrs. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Present.
Ms. Mungard?
Here.
Mr. Schulte?
Mr. Schulte is excused. The Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted at the entrance to the room. Tonight, our first item is a public hearing. The governing body of Educational Service Unit 18 is conducting this hearing pursuant to Section 77-1601.02 and other Nebraska laws. These laws provide that the property tax request for the Educational Service Unit for 2016-2017 shall be the property tax request from the prior year unless the unit holds[1684.83]